Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Wagner. I'm the Chair of the Hatfield Planning Board. It's our March 14th meeting, which actually is rescheduled from March 7th due to the snowstorm last Wednesday. To my left is Ron Saucy. To my right, near right, is Rick Bertram. And then at the far end of the table is Paul Labby. We have a public hearing at 6:30, which I will call at this point. We have just some administrative matters related to public hearings. So I will open the public hearing and read the notice. Provide the applicant or their representative with the opportunity to describe the project and any specific requests such as waiver grants of the board regarding the project. Then entertain any comments from supporters of the project and any questions that they may have of the applicant would be made through the chair. I'll then entertain any comments from opponents of the project. Again, any questions of the applicant will be made through the chair. The board will then be in a position to ask questions of the applicant or any of the supporters or opponents that are present today. We'll then close the public hearing and the board will deliberate on the project during which time members may again ask questions of the applicant, supporters, or opponents. And upon completion of its deliberations, the board, or I will as Chair, seek a motion to approve the project with or without conditions, a motion to reject the project, or a motion to continue the hearing to a future date with instructions to the applicant based on what may have been brought up during the public hearing. Before we start, there was a sign-in sheet that went around. Did anybody come in after that made its rounds? If so, please sign in. Okay. So with that, I would ask Brandon LeBlanc, are you here?
Yes.
If you could come up and then by the microphone or by this microphone and then if you could explain the project to folks, that would be great.
I'm pretty much here looking to get approval to be able to sell automobiles off of my lot.
Can you describe, just so that the folks on the television know where the property is and what its current use is?
It's located at Ford B. Lindsay Hill Road in West Hatfield. And right now, I am running an auto body shop, looking to expand into automotive sales also.
Okay. And so this, and you've submitted an application as well as we have the plans in front of us here. And you know that you're limited to the seven vehicles on the site at a time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And maybe you can just describe the current activity. You said you have an auto body shop there. Can you just describe that in some detail?
Pretty much, most of my business is restoration work with a little bit of collision. I don't do a whole lot of collision. I'm not like a big junkyard chopping up cars or anything like that.
And will you be selling cars that you bring in that, you know, people otherwise decide they don't want anymore? Or where are you going to get your cars?
No, most likely, most of them would be coming from an auction.
And in various states of repair, you'll fix them up or you'll?
I prefer to buy them and not have to fix them, but since I do have a full shop, if they did need repairs, I would perform the repairs on them.
So one of the reasons, and Kyle, oh, Kyle just stepped out. One of the reasons that Mr. LeBlanc is here is that this type of business activity requires, because he is going to be putting in used car display and sale of used cars, requires approval by the planning board and also approval then is the entryway for you to get a license from the town to actually establish this business.
Yes.
Are there any, do you have anything else you want to mention about the project?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are there any supporters of the project in the room that would like to speak? Okay. Is there anyone in the room that would like to raise any concerns or opposition to the project?
You did say seven vehicles at a time?
Seven is the maximum allowed vehicles at a time under the town's zoning bylaws.
Wait a minute.
Can you actually just state your name and location in town for the record?
Joe and Carolyn Strike Cars, 55 Lindsay Road, West Hatfield.
I'm just curious about hours of operation?
Hours of operation is usually from 8 to 6.
Seven days or?
No, Monday through Friday.
Is that what the current hours are for the auto body shop? Carolyn or Joe, anything else?
No, I mean, I don't have a problem with it with seven cars. I mean, if it was 25 cars or if he comes back next year and tries to change the zoning bylaws from seven to 25, then I'd have a problem with it.
Well, changing the zoning bylaws from, you know, from the seven that is there now would be something that would require a substantial amount of public hearing as well as two-thirds vote of the town meeting, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
So we, anyone else? Okay. So we did get a call from one of the neighbors who wasn't going to be able to be here today. And they asked if someone from the board could go and inspect the property and take a look at it. I've been up there a couple times because I actually use one of the neighboring auto repair places, so I'm up there from time to time. But I actually went by and can you give us some sense as to how you're going to, you mentioned that you're not, you know, that it's, you do auto body work and it's not really a junkyard, but I saw a number of sort of junk vehicles or what I would look like junk vehicles on the site.
Yes.
And this particular individual was concerned about the condition of the site and whether or not that would be cleaned up as a result of this initiative, this project that you're proposing.
Yes, it would be cleaned up. I was actually waiting for better weather to come to get rid of some of the cars that are there because it is kind of a muddy lot. And I was worried if a tow truck does come in and take, there's three vehicles that need to leave. Couple of them still need to get in for repairs, so I'd pretty much clean up a lot of the mess that's there.
Okay. I would like, I'm going to instruct the building inspector that as he's providing building permits to you and permits to actually take on this activity, that he keep an eye on that, the condition of that and to make sure that there is some cleaning up done because it did look like there were a couple significant junk vehicles on the site.
Yeah. Well, I know there's two vehicles there that are hit pretty hard and they don't look so good now, but.
Yeah. I mean, if they're there because they need to be repaired, that's one thing. If they're just there because they just have been sitting there for a while and haven't moved, that's another, so.
Yes.
And I think it would only behoove you with your business to have an attractive location anyway with people coming on site to look at used vehicles, so.
Yes.
Actually, since it's such a small crowd and we don't have a copy to put on the, well, I'll actually hold this up. Rick, if you can help me out here, just, Brandon, can you just very quickly for the camera, explain where you're going to put the vehicles? And you have a landscaped island here too, so just.
Yes.
Pretty much, it's these seven spots a lot right here up front. Probably halfway between the building and the property line at the far end towards the hill. Pretty much right where the property lines out, I'll be setting the cars.
Okay. And then you're putting in a landscaped island to just where you'll have your sign? That's where your signage will go?
Yes. For the state part, the state requires a sign visible so close to the road, so that's why that.
Right. And then you'll be aware of and know, working with the building inspector, of our signage requirements in terms of the size and so on.
Yes.
Okay. So any questions on that? Okay.
I just had one statement. I had a call from a butter. Butter's quite concerned that you're encroaching on, the butter, Mr. Stoddard, is concerned that you're encroaching into his property. Now, probably you don't even know where the property line is at this point, okay?
Yes.
But you're going to have to stay clear of that. The building inspector is going to explain to you that your vehicles can be no closer than 15 feet from the line.
Okay.
Okay? So just to make it really pleasant, you know?
Yes.
Keep them 15 feet from the line and everybody will be happy, you know? And like they say, clean up that stuff, that iron that's really there.
Yes.
So anyway, so this is a special, it's a, project is under 4.26 gasoline sales related services or other, I'm sorry, that's a, let me, motor, I'm sorry, I'm missing the actual location of the use right off the top of my head here.
Is it here on the public notice? Is it 4.9?
Oh, 4.9, okay. We have a number of them here. I'm sorry, bear with me. Here we go. Establishment is selling, yes, here it is. It is 4.9, which is, oh, I see. Okay. It is 4.9. Establishment is selling motor vehicles and/or accessories. And again, actually, a couple other things to keep in mind. So it's limited to seven vehicles. All other display vehicles must be set back at least 35 feet from the front boundary line. So you have to be 35 feet back from the road.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then your garage, your service bays, they're all located in the side of the rear buildings. Queuing of vehicles on the site must be accommodated in the side or rear yards of the building, but you have more than enough space to the south there for that. And again, so this is, this requires site permit and special site plan review. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and open it up to any other further discussion on part of the board or any questions that you may have for Mr. LeBlanc. All right. Now, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this project, site, special permit and site plan review for the, is it Big B.'s Auto Body?
Yes.
Is that what it's going to be called? And the site plan review and special permit to sell up to seven used cars on the site at any one time? Is there a motion to that effect?
I motion it.
Second.
Okay. So the motion is made by Rick Bertram, second by Paul Labby. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Take a vote on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So you're, we're going to.
You're going to sign these?
We're going to sign these. We have a stamp.
Right here.
Willa provided the stamp. We'll sign these and I would encourage you to then come into the office tomorrow with Wilma to sort of get everything bundled up in terms of, and then go and meet with Kyle.
Doesn't matter where we stamp it.
I don't know. Ask Bob if where he wants the stamp placed on here because it is a.
Yeah, why don't we, we don't need to do that with Mr. LeBlanc here, so why don't we do that after we're done with the meeting? Okay. Great. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Okay, Erica.
I have just.
You update us on the project, right?
Yes. We haven't started anything yet, but there are conversations with contractors and so on. We realize the need to add an overhead door to the back here so we can access during construction. And it was the easiest to go from the rear here. This is West Street here.
Erica, just for a second, if you may, so what we're doing now is we're, this is the Steeble Eltron Site Plan, which got an approval from the board about two or three meetings ago. And Erica Gies from representing Steeble is here to talk about a slight site plan alteration, so, okay.
Okay, thank you. So for construction purposes, to be able to pour this lab inside, we needed to create an overhead door from one of these sides here. And the easiest was from this, the north side here where there's already a paved area. So what we propose to do is the second page of your handout here is just add a paved And we cross the water quality swell, the culvert, and it's the exact same condition that we have already on site, on the existing. So that would be here and there's already one here, the exact same thing. So when we construct the water quality swell, we would add the culvert and then do the crossing, which would be, sorry, this one here.
Okay.
And just to orient everyone, so this is the existing.
Yeah.
We have a door back here. This is the new addition. And we just do the same thing off of this existing black tub and go across here.
Is it wetter over there or it's about the same?
Well, the water quality swell goes all the way around.
Yeah, it does, okay, it does.
So we have to bridge it with a culvert.
Okay.
We do the exact same thing. And that adds 787 square feet of coverage of paved area.
Okay.
And then the other issue, which is the first page, I brought to your attention, for the new garage we have, we need an apron, a paved apron there. And also, we'd like to make some improvements to the water quality swell by adding a little retaining wall. That way, because everything slopes to the interceptor, the oil interceptor, and by adding that little curb, that really makes sure that, you know, that continues and it's not disturbed by any snow plows coming through here. So that's the other thing we proposed to do. And then that adds an additional, the apron adds another 530 square feet. So our total additional coverage would be 1,318 square feet, which is a 1.02% increase. So our total coverage on the site there would now be 49.48%. So we're still under the allowable 70%.
Well below the 70%.
Yeah, well below. So it's here at this garage here, with the paving currently goes like this, the catch base and the oil interceptors, it's the one right here, it all drains to here, and the interceptor's underneath. And everything slopes down to here and that curb would come right here and that paving also would be, it goes up, these two are at the same height. And so everything would keep she flowing and draining to that area.
So this is right here, this is right here.
Correct.
Is right here. And then the other one is over there.
The other one is over here.
Now, do you need to, is this something the Conservation Commission needs to look at?
Well, I went to, I went to update them and they thought it was actually in their thing, but then I spoke to Mark and he said, no, water quality swales are not in the jurisdiction. But I still wanted to update everyone that, look, we're doing this. It's a modification to the plans, which, you know, normally we have to advise you, so that's what we're doing.
There's an existing order of conditions and we're adding this to it.
Okay.
Because it's really a maintenance issue.
Right.
The order of conditions is spelling out the maintenance of the property.
But it's outside the 100-foot buffer zone, so of the wetland area, which is over here.
And all of this is within the Hatfield side of the.
It's all within Hatfield.
So do you have new plans for us that reflect this for us to sign or?
It was just the SKs that Heritage issued. Now, they have, I could have them print an updated plan and I could send that to you, get that to you, because they'll have it. They just gave me the SK to come here, the sketch, but.
Yeah, I think we probably should have that.
Sure.
And then we can just sign those and then we'll have those as the amended record for the record.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay.
We're still a couple of months away from starting, but.
Okay. All right. I'm not sure that we need to vote on this.
Like Ron said, it's been in the works, you're just updating.
Right, and I'm just updating of the.
Yes, it's not a total, yeah.
It's not major, but that's the only little thing.
Right. But I think if we update, update the plan relative to.
This is from January.
Okay, that would be great.
Yes, I'll submit you an extra, just, this sheet's enough, right? Just the cover?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think we're going to need a couple, oh, just the cover sheet, but I think we need.
This is sheet two.
But we need a couple copies of it.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'll get you copies.
Okay.
Great.
All right, Erica, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And I'll make sure you have the area count.
Yes, that'd be great.
So I had printed those out and I'll make sure it's over.
Okay.
Okay, good. Here's an extra copy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need these back, Erica, or are we going to keep them? All right, okay.
Okay, we'll get them to Wilma. Rich, you're next on the agenda.
So my name's Rich Abbott, 66 Elm Street. And I would like to build a closet in a downstairs room. And to do that, I need to bump out about two feet, two and a half feet. And I'm close, that's the part of my house that is close to the neighbor's boundary. So that part of the building is about eight feet from the stockade fence I have and the boundary's probably right beyond that. And so my understanding that, that is something that, well, so my contractor went to the building inspector and was told that he couldn't give a permit because of the.
Because of the setback.
Setback, yes.
But it would be my understanding that this would be something you'd take to the zoning board of appeals to get a variance on.
I, maybe. I'm sort of clueless about what to do.
That would be, that would be my understanding of this, just because it's more of a setback issue and you're asking for a variance that your neighbors then would have to weigh in on. They would have to, there's typically a procedure where the neighbors within a certain distance are informed of the situation, they hold a hearing, in all likelihood, it's just the neighbor that's immediately affected. They either come by and say, no, we don't really want it any closer, or they say, yeah, this is fine, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
It would be, and it would be a variance in effect what you're asking for.
Now, do you think this does any difference in fact that I'm actually not getting any closer to their property?
So can you, do you have a drawing to show us?
So this is from the assessor's site. And so there's the, where are we here? Yeah, there's, there's the neighbor's house. And so I'm coming back this way, two feet, and that's about eight feet from here to there.
Oh, so you're not changing, you're not actually encroaching any closer to the existing.
Is that going to be cantilevered or are you going to put a footing and all that other stuff underneath you?
Well, it was to be decided and if it mattered in terms of getting a permit, we could do a cantilever, but we haven't decided which way to go on that.
This is your old house, isn't it?
It is my old house. Encroaching on my old house. We wouldn't have been able to permit.
Isn't that going any closer? You're going backwards.
Right, right, yeah. Is Kyle downstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, John.
What do you think on that, Ron? Do you think if he cantilevered that, would it make a difference where he's not going to put a footing in there?
It looks like it's already an existing condition. If anything, it's further away from the property line than the front corner.
Right.
The front corner is the closest distance.
If this is, this is the assessor's map, that's the location is to be believed, you don't have, this is in a more detail?
No, this is a plan of, yeah, actually, we did a bathroom renovation and Mark July did the flooring and this, so this is orientation north south. So this shows the closet, so this, this is this like that. You know, that's the closet there.
Oh, that's that corner right there.
Yeah.
Have you said anything to the neighbors or no, not yet, or?
I haven't asked them yet.
Oh, so actually, what happens is this new construction is, while it's no further, it's no closer to the lot line than your existing lot, it is a new structure that's within the, within the.
Right. I mean, this is a little bit accurate because it's really going to be in here, but I'm not.
But you will have a footing, in other words, you're going to bump out the foundation of the house a little bit.
Right, but no closer to them.
No closer to them, but it's a new structure that's closer to them in sense that it's, is that what I mean?
Right.
Yeah. So Kyle, we're talking with Rich about this situation, about whether or not, since he's not getting any closer, but it actually is a bit of a new construction that's within the, within the.
Setback.
The setback. But wouldn't that require, if anything, a variance?
A variance.
So wouldn't this just go to the zoning board of appeals?
Variance is harder, harder mark to meet in this town because the criteria is asked to be a hardship of some type is one of the criteria, and I'm not sure a closet would be considered a hardship, but it would be with that.
Well, yeah, so the reason this came about, we did a bathroom renovation and had to get rid of a existing smaller closet, so it's really not, I think technically, a bedroom now.
How many feet are you from, from that corner to the fence or your property line?
So from right here to the fence is approximately eight feet, a stockade fence. I suspect the line is actually a little bit beyond that.
Right.
So does it matter? So this is actually inaccurate in the sense of coming out here. And would it matter if it was cantilevered versus a footing or?
I was just thinking about that.
Yeah, well.
Oh, you are. I'm telling you, you track absolutely perfectly. You know what this is.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that. I think if you cantilevered that, it works.
It wouldn't be, because it wouldn't be foundation, right?
Because you wouldn't put a footing in, you wouldn't put a foundation in, yeah. And you wouldn't need it really because of the closet, you know, you could pop a little bit of heat.
Well, the bad part of it is it's in the same line or even.
A little bit in from what his line is, yeah.
I have no problem with that, truthfully.
Okay.
It would seem, so, yeah.
I mean, I think common sense prevails. He's not going closer here.
Right.
He's, it's going in from, in from the structure.
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that.
Right. There's actually a drain pipe in the corner, which we didn't want to interrupt, so we have to be in a little bit.
So you'll go in from the structure now and you'll do this.
Are you banging it in this way? I'm okay with that. Rather have you not cantilever.
And discuss it with Kyle, then I think you could.
Just opens the door to a bunch of issues.
You could work it out.
Push it in, but don't cantilever it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would think that's your best bet.
And so it would just be a footing, basically?
Yeah. But you know, I mean, you, when you cantilever things, insulation, little critters, you know, all kinds of things.
Yeah, I think the only, it was my fault. I didn't do it right, so I get it.
Yeah. No, that is a tool around that, you know?
So for my contractor, if he comes to you, does he just need to sketch this out a little bit more precise?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll take care of that.
Okay. All right.
It was a good idea, will you? For one, just say it was a good idea, Paul, but it didn't work.
It was a good idea, Paul. Paul, great idea.
Thanks a lot. That's all I wanted to know.
All right. Okay, thanks, Rich. So we don't have you on the agenda.
I'm not on the agenda, sir. Just mostly here to listen and I understood you were going to be taking up marijuana policy, possibly title cannabis policy. I make a reference to it. I'm a town resident, lived in town since I was one year old. Hesitate to say my age now. I'm sergeant on the police force over at UMass Amherst. I'm also a graduate student working on public policy and administration. I'm writing my capstone thesis right now with a group of three people exploring cannabis industry and how it's going to affect the town of Deerfield. I'm working currently with Wendy Foxman, the town administrator over there, and we're exploring, we're exploring a number of things between the four phases of zoning and planning and working with their planning board and select board to kind of understand how it's affecting the town. I'm doing a comparative analysis with towns in Colorado and Washington State to give them a report ahead of their town meeting May that will be something that they can digest and hopefully vote more educated, in a more educated way on. Mostly just wanted to, one, let you know that that's happening and, two, I'd be happy to provide this board with a copy of that report as Deerfield and Hatfield are relative comparative towns in many ways and not all respects, obviously, but just wanted to put that out there that that's going to be available and I'd be happy to provide that to this I'd be happy to provide that to this board if there's any interest in it.
Okay, so, well, that's a good segue into, uh, the next conversation that we have. We have a couple other things, just to, not, not that we're acting, we're not acting on any of these items tonight. So, um, are you aware of the fact that we have a draft bylaw out there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and so, just for folks on the television, um, there is a draft, uh, marijuana establishment zoning bylaw that's available, uh, at the town clerk's office, and I've asked, uh, Wilma Davis, our administrative assistant, to post it on the website. Um, it's, uh, the, uh, copy at the town clerk's office was there in time, uh, for the requisite requirements for a hearing to be held on April 4th at 6:30 on those bylaws. So, it, it's important, I think, for as many, uh, folks in town, especially if you have an interest in this subject, to take a look at those draft bylaws, and to come on April 4th at 6:30 to discuss them, and, uh, and talk through the procedures that the town needs to address relative to, um, uh, the new marijuana establishments here in the state. So, uh, to update the committee, uh, we held a here, uh, we held a meeting, our last meeting, we didn't have a quorum, uh, but Paul and I were, Paul Labby and I were present, and we essentially billed it as an open forum. We had, uh, representative, uh, from, actually, the superintendent of the schools was here, police chief, fire chief. At different times during the meeting, we had, uh, the select board represented, the town administrator, zoning, um, enforcement officer, uh, building inspector was here. Um, I think that, I'm not sure who else, what other boards or committees were represented that night. Uh, but we had a good conversation, a good discussion about, uh, the upcoming, uh, law and the fact that, um...
They can find that on YouTube.
Yeah, actually, John reminds us that that, uh, open forum is available on YouTube, if people wanna look at it. In there, we talked a lot about, sort of, what the options are for the town.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll go over all of those on April 4th, again, what the options are, also, um, what the schedule is that the Cannabis Control Commission is, uh, hoping to adhere to. In fact, uh, tomorrow, March 15th, is when their regulations, their draft regulations are due to be released.
They've finalized...
They'll finalize.
They finalized the draft recently, as a matter of fact. I, I've got 94G, uh, in its first version printed out with me, uh, and not a lot has substantially changed since that, that original draft came out.
Yeah, so when the original draft came out, and up from then until now, and it, as I said, they're to be released tomorrow, um, they've been holding hearings around the, around the Commonwealth, and, um, and, uh, they're anticipating then, uh, you know, accepting applications, uh, and the idea would be that the first, uh, potential establishments could be licensed as early as July 1st. So, with the understanding that the town may elect, um, and I'm not aware of any, uh, movement in this direction, but, not that anyone has made me aware of, the town may elect to consider prohibiting marijuana establishments, uh, because the townspeople of Hatfield voted for the referendum to legalize, uh, marijuana use in 2016, there's a two-step process for prohibiting any or all of the marijuana establishments that are allowed under the law, and that is to actually have a resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen that's voted on a town meeting, and then that item would actually have to be voted on at a ballot question, um, at the, uh, next available, uh, election, which of course could not be the May town elections, because there's not enough time between town meeting and May town election. Having said all that, uh, this, and I'm reiterating or repeating perhaps things that you've seen at other meetings, the planning board has decided that we need to move forward with putting together zoning bylaws, so that if the town does, um, elect to move forward with, uh, marijuana establishments, or there is an effort to prohibit marijuana establishments, and it fails at the ballot box, we're prepared with, uh, zoning regulations to, uh, cite, permit, and regulate, um, the various marijuana establishments that are, that are allowed under the state law. So, I will, um...
I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
If I may, I can offer you a cautionary tale from Kalama, Washington. Uh, they did not plan accordingly, and subsequently, there, they wanted to have one sales establishment within the town. They now have six, because they were forced to a situation where they had to accept all applications, because they didn't plan appropriately. I would, uh, just caution you also to say, make sure you're planning for all four phases, uh, and special permitting for each one, being cultivation, manufacturer, uh, sale, and consumption. Uh, and consumption is more or less being taken off the tail by the, the Control of the Commission right now.
Yeah.
But be conscious that you should have some kind of bylaw, uh, language to, to address it, uh, even if it's not ready yet, for what that's worth.
So, to your point, um, our, uh, bylaw right now does address, uh, actually, uh, five of the items, uh, uh, the, uh, independent testing laboratory, um, the product manufacturer, the retailer, uh, the two forms of cultivation. Um, and on the subject of, uh, onsite consumption, as the gentleman mentioned, there seems to be a bit of a, uh, stepping back from that. The governor, in particular, has expressed concerns that the state move forward in a, in a measured fashion, uh, and maybe not initially allow for onsite consumption. I'm also having a conversation, uh, hopefully tomorrow, if not tomorrow, on Friday, with our, um, with our interim town council, um, uh, 'cause Gary Brackett is ill, so someone else from his firm is representing them, uh, as far as providing advice to us, on the subject of onsite consumption, uh, because there's some confusion in the law. The law seems to suggest that onsite conception has to be, um, approved. Uh, in, in other words, the language, the way it's written is, is that onsite consumption is not allowed unless it's, unless it's approved by the town. Whereas all of the other establishments are allowed unless they're prohibited by the town. And so there's a lot of debate in the legal community as to whether or not the law actually says what it seems to say, which is that to allow onsite consumption requires a vote of the community, and that it's, the default would be that it's not allowed. Um, so as soon as we get some, uh, language to that effect, we will build that in to our draft. But, um, to the, again, for the people on the television, um, and anyone watching, that, um, the draft bylaws and the use table, which I would encourage you all to get from the town clerk, or when they're available on the website, to take a look at, we addressed some of the issues that were raised at the public forum. For example, um, it was, uh, it was asked of the, by the school committee, and I think that given that we've been talking about retail establishments being, uh, in our buildings, uh, in our, uh, business district, built, business light industrial and industrial districts, but primarily thinking of them being out on, uh, the major highway corridor on Route 5, um, the school committee asked that no retailer be located within a half mile of any pre-existing public or private school. The state actually sets that, uh, limit, which can be reduced or increased by a town, to at 500 feet. Um, now, a half mile, now it turns out that our two schools, uh, 'cause we weren't anticipating and weren't envisioning allowing retail establishments in town center businesses, you remember. Um, uh, and quite frankly, I'm not really sure why anybody would locate, uh, an establishment in town center, want to, just because of the, uh, limited amount of traffic. Um, but, that being said, our two schools happen to be here in the east, uh, side of town, and a half mile actually, and the reason, and the justification in their mind, uh, which I, and Paul and I both, you know, we couldn't make any decisions at our last meeting, but we both sort of thought it seemed reasonable, um, is that a half mile is the walking distance. The kids that live within a half mile of the school don't get bus service. And so they didn't want the walkers, if you will, uh, to walk past a retail establishment. Uh, we also have in here that no marijuana retailer shall be located within 300 feet of any pre-existing residential use, um, and that, uh, no marijuana establishment, other than, as noted by the, uh, the exemption around the, uh, school buildings, that no marijuana establishment, this would include manufacturing, uh, the, uh, cultivation, as well as, um, uh, in, uh, testing laboratory, be within 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school or a childcare facility. Um, so, those are the kinds of things that you'll find in the bylaw. Um, again, to the, some of the comments raised by the, uh, gentleman here, who's doing some work on this, uh, for your thesis, I guess it is?
That's right.
Yeah, so, um, the town can limit the number of retail establishments at any one time, uh, but that limit cannot be less than 20% of the off-site, uh, package store leases or licenses that we have in town. Our off-site package store license, uh, limit is seven, so 20% of that is 1.4. So we have in our bylaw limited, uh, the number of retail establishments in town, and no more than two at any one time. So that addresses the question, or the issue that came up, I guess, in Kalama, Washington, where they did not, uh, pass bylaws, and they find themselves with six or seven, uh, retail establishments. There's also language in here about, uh, additional requirements regarding signage and, uh, the use of the words, or displays, or artwork, uh, depicting marijuana, or cannabis, or ca, or marijuana plants, or products. Uh, no public events, uh, at any of the marijuana establishments. There's language in here about, uh, odor, and, um, uh, odor control and technologies, uh, many of these, and also for cultivation on, uh, on pesticides and herbicide use is gonna be dictated by the state, and, uh, and, uh, in the case of cultivation, by the, um, Massachusetts Department of Ag, Agricultural Resources. So, we really don't have anything, um, that we can discuss tonight, because we do have a public hearing coming up. Um, I know that, um, a couple things have been raised, uh, just clarification questions, but again, we can bring all of those up on April 4th. So what I'd encourage you, all of our members, to do is to, in addition to folks that we would encourage to get copies of the draft, is to read them thoroughly, bring your questions or concerns, uh, to the aug, to the April 4th meeting, and we'll address them then, and, uh, and change, and adapt, and, uh, modify the draft, uh, bylaw at that point.
Bob can correct me if, if he doesn't think on proper, but, every person that was involved here at that discussion, out of their part of the town, were pretty darn well-informed as to what was happening in this thing, and they had put a lot of effort into thinking about what we should have done, or what the planning board was doing, and they were quite impressed that we were that far along in what we were doing, you know? So, uh, it turned out to be a really good discussion. Hope those guys are here on the 4th, where they can talk, you know?
I heard that there was draft language, I'm curious, you said it was gonna be posted online shortly, is that right?
Yeah, so the, we're required, when we post a public hearing, to have the draft bylaw with the town clerk, and it's been with the town clerk now for over a week, but, um, I just talked to our...
Give him this one?
Uh, yeah, so we have a copy here I can give you.
Thank you.
And, uh, but we're, we're gonna make sure that it's on the website as well, so here.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Not a problem, I had two of them.
Yeah. So, um, a coup, anybody have any comments that they wanna make about this subject?
About?
The, yeah.
Different things on this?
Well, I think if there's any...
Sure, you saved that for the 4th.
Yeah, I'd save that for the 4th, just because we can't, we're not gonna be in a position to make any changes to this at this point, 'cause this is what's out there for people to review.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get comments from the public, and we'll get comments from the board members, so...
Okay.
I'm just curious, how, how it compares to the, um, retail establishment that sells alcohol? With, with, um, offhand, you know?
Yeah, so...
Same thing as alcohol.
That's not it.
No, no, no.
That's only in industrial...
I think it tracks, pretty much the same.
Does, sometimes, but...
It's, uh, you know, like...
Tavern.
There is an off-site, uh...
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't understand.
Package store selling alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so it's very similar.
Yes.
Special permit.
Yep.
Oh, no, no, you can, but it's...
What's B?
No, actually, this is...
That's special permit?
No, that's actually just, um, that's just special permit, but we're requiring special permit and site plan approval. So we're requiring both.
SPA.
SPA, yeah.
Yeah, we really, we...
Yeah. Um, I have a couple other things I wanted to just, um, touch on before we wrap up tonight. Um, so, as the board knows, and certainly those that follow us closely, um, we, we get updates from the building inspector on projects, and how they're moving forward, and if there's been any issues. We also, uh, get updates, uh, as needed, from the fire chief, um, if there was an issue relative to, um, fire prevention or fire safety. So, um, I've gotten from our fire chief, an update on the Helena, uh, project, 'cause if you remember, when we issued the permit for Helena Chemical, um, there was a lot of discussion with the chief about, uh, the fact that they were now sort of tripping a new, uh, set of standards and requirements for fire protection. So I have from, uh, uh, the chief, "I've come to an agreement with Tom Carter and Helena about fire protection for their site. They'll add a fire hydrant at the north end of the property, add a fire alarm to the entire building, segregate flammable and combustible products to protected cinder block room at the south end of the building, sprinkle the offices and the protected room and small shop, including fire department connection to the sup, to, uh, to, uh, to supplement, uh, install a Knox box," which I'm not sure what that is, but...
Knox box is a key that goes on the outside of the building, it's got a master key, the fire department has access.
Can get into it, or the police department.
Get into it, okay.
Any, any emergency people can get into their building.
Okay, 'cause they have a key to that box.
That's right, key to the box.
Okay, like the realtors use some cars, yeah, right.
Not that far off, yeah.
Um, "And produce a management plan to limit inventory of the most hazardous products. As they finalize their plans with their engineer, I feel it is reasonable to allow them to get started with the project. This also went to the bill, this was actually to the building inspector. The end result of this, from the fire protection standpoint, leaves a much safer structure for the workers, the firefighters, and the community." So, I was pleased to get that report. Um, the other thing that I'm, uh, still getting some feedback and input on from the, from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, is that, um, I have to say, I was unaware of the fact that state law allows us, as necessary, to actually, um, require an applicant to pay for us to hire an outside consultant to review plans. So for example, if there's a, if an issue comes up regarding, uh, stormwater, uh, management, or drainage, or wetlands protection, or their plan for, uh, dealing with, um, stormwater, um, collection and, and drainage, and we, and we feel we need to have a second opinion, if you will. The state law allows us to actually hire a consultant to do that, and to provide that secondary opinion, at the cost of, uh, to, uh, to the applicant.
On the ConCom, it's called a third-party review.
Yeah.
So we, we have that also in place. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission...
Does it for you?
Yes.
Yeah, and so Pioneer, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission often does this with other communities. In fact, they provided me examples of, um, of, uh, of, uh, open agreements that they have with the town of Blanford and the town of Southampton. So, on an as-needed basis, if it's required, that they assist with reviewing a project or whatever. And what I found out from talking to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is that, this is business as usual for most people that are developing properties. It's, it, he said, they were telling me that it's sort of somewhat unusual, that this hasn't been the case with the planning board in Hatfield, that like in Northampton, or Amherst, or Hadley, and many of the communities around here, if there is a need for additional insight, uh, expertise, a second opinion, if you will, for us to really understand what's being presented to us.
Yeah.
And whether or not it's on the up and up, or, um, you know, is, uh, meeting all of the necessary standards and codes, getting this outside, uh, input and information, and having that be a cost to the applicant is, uh, is sort of standard operating procedure in many communities. Now, of course, in, in Northampton and Amherst, they have staff that can handle much of this.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
But if there is some specialized, um, uh, special, uh, specialty, uh, that they don't have at their disposal, they'll go out and get a consultant to help them with go out and get a consultant to help them with that. So I'd like us to think about that, and we can bring it up at another meeting.
Oh, yeah, most definitely, because there's, once they start tap dancing and talking, you kinda wonder whether, what the hell's going on here, you know? We know what, where the water's gonna end up or not, you know?
Right.
That's, that's the...
No, exactly. And I think that, you know, we're not, I mean, we may, you have expertise in, in real estate, and Ron has expertise in surveying, I have expertise in protecting land, but outside of, you know, expertise that we may have, we're sort of flying, you know, somewhat blind on some of these issues. And this would allow us, I think, to feel more confident about some of the decisions that we make regarding some of these more complicated and bigger projects, which I anticipate we may see more of.
Has the COSCOM been using that, Ron? Have they been, have they done it?
No, but we've, we've considered it on a couple of occasions where we, you know, it came to the point where we requested more information rather than bringing a third-party review, but it was considered on, on a couple of occasions. There was, there was a woman who works with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission who was gonna be our, our third-party reviewer.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Okay. The only other thing I have is just to say that Gary Brackett, our town council, and he was a big help to us here recently on one of our proposed projects that we reviewed, he's, he's very ill, he's in the hospital, so I have a get well card for him here that I'd like everyone to sign. And, and with that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, so motion made by Paul Labby, seconded by Rick Bertram. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And before we go off the air, just remind everybody that our hearing on the zoning bylaws for marijuana establishments in town will be April 4th, Wednesday, April 4th at 6:30, and with the idea that these will be considered and brought up at town meeting in May. Thank you.
Goodbye.